A resolution declaring the intent of the city of Colorado Springs, Colorado, to issue its multifamily housing revenue bonds to finance the construction of a senior affordable multifamily housing facility known as Atrium at Austin Bluffs.
All right, Mark, so how should we do this?
Yeah, at this point, staff should present the project and then whoever would like to comment can comment, or since this is not a quasi judicial item, you could ask, who wants to come up and speak with the questions, but I don't know how many people are here for this item.
Yeah, so how many people are here for this item? Looks like a bunch of you, a bunch of you, okay.
Perhaps it would be appropriate for staff to provide their presentation.
Yeah, let's staff to have a little bit of a presentation first and then we'll let you come up and Steve, come on.
And each person will have the opportunity to speak for three minutes under your rules.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, City Council, Steve Posey, Hutt, Program Manager for the city. This item was introduced at the City Council Work Session two weeks ago. I would like to point out that the item that was introduced is actually a resolution to issue private activity bonds. It is not an item that addresses any physical aspects of what this development may end up being, so I just want to kind of keep that in mind as we go forward.
Well, and that's really what we can address today, right, Mark? It's not, we're not talking about anything, you know, the height of the building or the, you know, the parking or traffic or anything like that. That's a whole nother process.
That's correct, and along those lines, the development team for this project will go through the entire process that is required to receive entitlements and approval for a multifamily residential project, and that will include some middle of a development plan, public meetings related to that development plan, multiple opportunities for citizens and residents to comment about that development plan and about the project. And we actually do have Lee Patke from Grecio Housing here this afternoon, and I would actually like Lee to come up just briefly and say a few words to City Council because I know he has expressed to me multiple times his commitment to engaging with the neighborhood and with the community as this project moves forward.
And then this will, just to let people know in the audience, there'll be public meetings, there'll be a hearing at Planning Commission, and it will come to City Council, it could be appealed to City Council if, so, okay, just wanted to talk about that. Lee, come on up.
Okay, thank you, councilors. My name is Lee Patke, I'm Executive Director of Grecio Housing. Grecio Housing has been an affordable housing developer and provider in Colorado Springs since 1990. We have, I previewed this for you two weeks ago, but for everyone in the audience, the landscape of how affordable housing is developed in our community has changed significantly in the last five years. For the first, really, 25 years we were in operation, the standard of operation was to acquire and renovate older distressed properties. At that time, it was hard to get even renovation dollars from the city or state. Now, both the city and state and across the nation understand that it's in everyone's best interest when affordable housing is developed to make sure that the property is developed well enough that it can sustain for at least 10 or 15 years, build up reserves, and then replace those systems. We've come a long way from having teams of volunteers come into old Victorians and convert them for affordable housing. The change in the real estate market about five years ago really flipped the script more than anything else. We were developing properties at a fraction of the time and cost of what you can now. The competition for multifamily properties is quite stiff because rents have gone out so much that out-of-area and out-of-state investment really have consumed a lot of our resources, and a lot of those rental dollars are going to investors out of our area. Grecio Housing has grown and developed our system to have capacity to develop new affordable housing properties in a way that's responsible and brings these properties to completion. This is our, the second low-income housing tax credit property that we have been a part of. The first one, we will be the property manager, it's under construction currently, and we're a very minority, we have a minority ownership stake in that. We are the developer for the Atrium at Austin Bluffs. We do have a professional low-income housing tax credit development consultant group joining us on this project to guide us through. It takes many iterations of projects to really develop the skill to do it independently, so we do have a tax credit consultant on our team. We've got a local construction company, we have broad local support dating back to March of last year with a land donation agreement, commitment of funds from the County Housing Authority, a recent state affordable tax credit award, and a 4% federal tax credit award from the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, and as of last Wednesday, the trustees of a local major foundation, which we've not come to terms on the agreement yet and not signed the bottom line, I was hoping to say the name today, but we do have another local foundation that is supporting our pre-development costs. The Atrium at Austin Bluffs is planned to be 54 units of senior affordable housing, meaning 62 years or older, 42 one-bedrooms, 12 two-bedrooms, and a mix of area median income set-asides for the apartments of six units at 30%, six units at 40%, 21 at 50%, and 60 at 60% of area median income. A lot of the plans, the concepts, the architectural drawings are all under development. We have a general idea of the amenities, but I'm not going to get into those today. As Steve mentioned, today, the vote is about, or the decision is about whether or not to use part of the city's allocation of private activity bonds for multifamily apartment, affordable multifamily apartment development to this project. So I'd like to give you just a few details from our market study. We had a market study done in December of 2018 and then updated in January of 2019, and a few of those points. Traditions is another senior complex that is a 4% federal tax credit development, just about a mile and a half from this property. The market study indicates that the rapid lease-up at Traditions is likely understated as its units have come online as soon as they were ready for occupancy. The market area is expected to gain 235 senior renter households per year and should gain 470 by the time our property comes online, and the market area's pent-up demand for affordable senior units will continue to increase. The Traditions came online in 2018 and has leased 39 units per month, which is about double the normal occupancy rate, but the rapid pace of absorption is reflective of significant demand of affordable senior rental housing in our area. Both other surveyed tax credit, senior tax credit projects, both inside and outside the studied area, were 100% occupied and had waitlists with 200 to 225 applicants, which are longer than any other surveyed waitlist that this organization has looked at illustrating strong pent-up demand for senior tax credit dwellings. This, our property includes 12 units restricted at 30 and 40% of area median income and will nearly double the existing inventory for non-assisted living, age-restricted 30 and 40% AMI dwellings within our area. And finally, two last things. Our property, the units at our property that are set aside for 30 and 40% of AMI renters, the rents are 60 to 73% lower than the weighted average for similar Class B senior market-rate rents. Our 50% rents are set aside at 54% less than market, and our 60% rents are at least 45% lower, demonstrating true affordability for the seniors in our community. And finally, surveyed senior tax credit units were 100% occupied and outperforming market-rate projects in general, while senior tax credit properties also had longer waitlists than other family tax credit properties. So I just want to end by saying, we have a demonstrated third-party market study that demonstrates a need for this property, strong local support, and just a final note, developments in long vacant land can sometimes be difficult. The neighbors that I've spoken to so far, the conversations we've had in person and on the phone have been cordial, have been respectful, have been informative, and I'm very encouraged by that, even when there's disagreement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Dave, you have a question for Lee?
Just, Lee, if you could, one of the things, two weeks ago, we talked a little bit about this, but we should have followed up with this, this question I'm going to ask you now. 30% of AMI, so the rent then is determined, you look at the AMI, which is roughly $16,000?
Oh, I can tell you exactly this week.
What is, what is?
For a single person at 30% of AMI, that's someone that's earning $17,100 or less annually, and for a two-person household, $19,560. The comparable one- and two-bedroom rents, the maximum allowable rent is set by the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority and Housing and Urban Development. Those rents are $4.58 for rent plus utilities for a one-bedroom and $5.49, including rent and utilities for a two-bedroom.
And the need that you're talking about is, there are folks out there that are trying to make it on that income and they can't find rents at those rates?
Over 80% of our current residents are earning 50% or less of area median income. There is a, the two strongest areas anecdotally that we see are at those lower income limits, as well as three-bedroom units for families, which this property is not a traditional family property, but the three bedrooms are in high demand.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on behalf of the project? Hold on, and if not, Steve, you're through. So what we're trying to address here today is our resolution declaring the intent of the city of Colorado Springs to issue its multifamily housing revenue bonds to finance the construction. Intent to finance the construction. And whether the construction goes forward and how it goes forward are issues that are going to be dealt with in other processes. Am I right on that, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the status of the land use related to this. Are we through the land use entitlement process, Steve?
No.
So those processes will all occur in the future.
Will occur, so I would, go ahead, Steve, yeah.
The only action that City Council is being asked to take is to reserve a portion of the city's private activity bonds to finance the project at a future date.
And whether it may not happen. It's possible that there'll be obstacles along the way.
The development team will have to go through all of the same processes that any other development has to go through, in terms of receiving approvals for the land and receiving approvals for the balance of the financing that it's going to take to construct the project.
Right, that's what I mean, okay. Tom?
Yeah, while you're up here, Steve, again, this is the intention of the city to reserve a portion. Do you, do we know what portion that is, what dollar figure we would be wanting to reserve?
The resolution calls for City Council to reserve $8 million of the city's private activity bond cap.
And, and that's 8 million of what total?
That would be 8 million of the 2018 allocation, which was approximately 24.2.
So about a third?
About a third, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, good.
All right, so.
Can I clarify one other?
Yeah, go ahead.
In, in, when we're talking about the city's bonding cap, the city is not serving as the bonding agency, is that correct?
The city is acting as the bond issuer. However, the city has no financial obligation related to any debt that may be incurred by those bonds.
And just to clarify, every municipality, county, the state gets the authority to issue a percentage of bonding authority, the city gets 24 million plus, and the city is asking that the council approve roughly 8 million of that for this, but the responsibility for repaying the bond and the bank will issue the bond for tax purposes, and then the developer will be paying the bond back?
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
All right. So now I'm going to ask for people from the public who want to talk and address this resolution about our intent to reserve the money. Come on up.
Okay, thank you.
And state your name for the record.
Okay, very much. Anybody?
My name is David Terry. My wife and I own the property adjacent to the proposed site for the atrium. We've never been approached by Grecio, we have never had a discussion with them to extend our concerns, and other than some issues which have gone by the wayside, the main issue we have with it is parking. That this sits on a plot of land on private, these are all private roads inside of there, the majority of which we own. Parking is not allowed on Austin Bluffs or Templeton Gap.
So David, that'll be another hearing that you can address specifically.
Right, but I just want to, I mean, you're going to vote today to move forward with bonds to finance this, and what I'm saying is, with a 54-unit apartment building, I do not, from, I've seen drawings on this building, and I don't see how in the world they're going to get at a minimum 54 parking places, not to mention Americans with Disability Act requirements for the parking for the mobility accessible units. Now, I'm guessing that all of these apartments will have to be mobility accessible, which means ADA requires a parking set-aside for disabled people. I haven't seen nothing in their preliminary sketches, and that's all I've seen, just preliminary, the rumor mill, nothing official from them or the city, but that where it would provide for a basic minimum 54 parking places, because if, if there were not enough parking there, and I had heard that, well, people over 62 years of old, by and large, do not drive anymore because of their age. I am 70. But it's the parking issue, parking.
David, I just, I know this is an important issue.
Right.
But we're not dealing with this today, and you'll have an opportunity to do this. There'll be traffic engineers and there'll be experts, if and when, and it may not even go to that point, we're not sure this is going to happen, but if we're going to spend the whole afternoon talking about the.
Right, not a lot of the later part, of course.
Development plan and its details, I'm going to not, I'm not going to allow people to talk.
Okay, well, thank you, and I wasn't aware of all of the.
I know, and that's why.
Rules that go on with City Council, but I couldn't.
I kept trying to explain it, but we appreciate you coming and we want to hear your voice. But there'll be other opportunities.
Okay, very good, well, thank you, Mr. Councilman.
Yeah.
First, sir, I do want to thank you for pulling it off and at least taking the time today to let us know that there are issues, so that we can have that in the back of our minds and know to ask the questions when this comes forward to us, wherever it comes forward. I would say as the, and I think I was the lone councilman that voted no, there might have been one or two others, but I, I think I was the lone councilman that voted no on the sale of this to Grecio, because I don't think we had done our due diligence on the one logical buyer, but Steve and I have gone through that and are working that on the real estate manual. It got approved by council, so that sale is done. It's to Grecio, the building is going to be sent there. The vote today does not mandate that a building will be there, this is not the issuance of bonds. There are going to be other off-ramps that are going to be more critically based in the future, on which we will have concrete reasons to say yes or no. This one is just a simple little check the square, so they can tell the banks, yeah, we have the authority to get a bond, doesn't mean that they are going to get the bond yet.
Wayne?
It's been said, but let me hopefully say it in a way that, I don't know, maybe it comes out better, maybe it doesn't. Today, we are not analyzing whether the proposed apartments meet parking requirements, we're not looking at setbacks, we're not looking at all of the requirements of the development plan. All of that is a later process, and so it has to be addressed by the developer when they come through. And so we're not looking at how many units should go there or any of the other issues there. We're simply looking at, if it does go forward, is it okay to use some of the bonding authority that the city has been granted? And so there are, there is a process that will take place, just like with any other development, with respect to input on, hey, I don't think the set-aside setback is right, hey, I don't think there's enough parking, but this isn't that forum. And so we're happy to, to address things related to the bonding issue, which is all we're talking about today, but we're not putting in place any entitlement to an actual land use at the meeting today, so that's why this might seem a little confusing, but there's a number of steps, and I, and maybe that helps and maybe it doesn't. Okay. Bill?
There's nothing confusing here, it's, we're on a moving train, and at each stage, you know you're getting closer to a stage where a decision has to be made and a building starts to go up. The citizens are here to register their concerns. The, in this particular case, the best way I think we can handle this is if everyone here who is or wants to speak on this particular subject, if they would take a sheet and put your email address on it and give it to both Steve and the Grecio folks, so that there's no disconnect, that you are concerned and you want to be informed when you do go forward with any kind of proposal. Okay? And then a commitment by this council that we hear you, and that when these issues do come back up, we expect you all here again, and/or you send us an email saying, I wasn't contacted, I don't know what's going on, I tried to talk to them and they wouldn't listen. And that's the communication, and again, what we're going to decide here is about the bonding issue, but your concerns are duly registered in all our minds, but we need to institutionalize it in writing to everyone else, so there's, there's less opportunity to fail to notify you about what the next stages are and who's doing what to whom. Thank you.
Okay, that's a thought. All right, anybody else want to speak on the, on the bonds? Come on up, and you can do that first, and then I'll do you next. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, council. I'm Robert Hunt, and I live in the area. I want to know what the implications, again, I wasn't quite understanding what the implications of this vote is, allowing the city to issue $8 million worth of bonds. Where does that leave us in this process?
It's simply the intent to reserve that money in case the, the project goes forward.
Okay, so this money, this money is being set aside for this purpose and therefore will not be used for other purposes, is that correct?
Not be used for other purposes, so if you.
So it's in limbo until this is decided.
Yeah, that's, that's true, and so if this, if you wanted to come up and say, you know, there's another affordable housing project I think this 8 million should go to, that, that would be valid for us to.
Right, well, obviously, I don't, I don't have affordable housing projects in the back of my pocket, but I do think, how does this impact, impact other projects that might have gone forward? And I hope the council takes that into consideration when they vote.
Yeah. David, did you want to respond?
I was going to respond to you, Mr. Hunt, is, Mr. Hunt, right now, it's my understanding, Steve, there are no other projects at this juncture, this is, that, I'm looking behind you, because Mr. Posey's right behind you, I'm looking to see him shake his head, there are no other projects at this point. I mean, I know there's things in, in the.
So we don't, we don't need $8 million to fix our roads then, that can just wait.
Unfortunately, I can't use it for that.
This money.
Especially Templeton Gap, that's a disentgrating, we don't need that, that's good to know that, I appreciate that.
It's, 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 it's federal money for this purpose.
This is a particular type of financing, and last year in 2018, the City Council voted to carry forward $24.2 million in these types of bonds specifically for affordable multifamily rental projects. So broadly speaking, these bonds cannot be used for another purpose.
Right.
And to respond to Councilmember Geislinger's comment about the project pipeline, there are other projects that are in that pipeline that will be coming to us and coming to City Council requesting reservations of bonds as well, but at the moment, we do have enough capacity for all of the projects that are in the pipeline.
Thank you.
Good, Wayne?
And just to clarify a little bit of what was just said, we didn't use 24 million last year that we carried over, so this is not taking money away from some other project that's been competing for it. And, yes, it's a federal grant, it's a federal allocation, we cannot use it for other purposes, we cannot use it to fix our roads, we can't use it to provide more cops on the streets or any of these other needs, we can't use it to buy a new ladder truck for the fire department, we have to use it for the specific purposes, and if we don't use it within, I think it's three years with the carryover, then what happens?
At that point, we would be asking either the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority or the State Division of Housing to use the bonds for, also for affordable multifamily rental. They typically have a project pipeline that is considerably bigger than any one jurisdiction's pipeline, because they are looking at projects all across the state of Colorado, and so as, if we were to get to the end of that period, we would be entering into a conversation with CHAF to say, hey, how could we assign these bonds to a project that possibly would be close enough to Colorado Springs or this region that we might get some benefit out of it?
Okay, so it goes to CHAF, which could then use it to fund a housing project in Thornton?
In, in where?
Thornton.
Yes, potentially, yes.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, Stephen, you wanted to come up and talk about this, please do, state your name for the record.
My name is Paul Reed, R-E-E-D, and I live nearby in the, the property in question. I would just like to plant a seed with the council members today that they won't forget. I'm a qualified engineer, and this particular plot of land would just properly support an A-framed Viner Schnitzel. I'll leave that with you.
Okay, good. Can, Steve, can affordable housing money go for that? No, just kidding, okay. Anybody else want to speak on that, on this issue? You, and then I'll get you next.
Good afternoon, my name is Patricia Hurley, H-U-R-L-E-Y. I do live near the property in question, and I'll keep it simple. I am opposed to the financing of this project.
Okay, thank you. And who else would like to speak? Come on up, and I was going to get her next, just because she raised her hand first, and then I'll get you, and if you could hold your applause, that'd be great, thank you.
I will give my email address to Mr. Posey. I just wanted to ask, do we know how soon we might get emails or cards from, from Grecio saying about when you have a local ED that we could. saying about when you would have a local ED that we could
Yeah, Patricia
Lisa Sheldon from Saddleback.
Yeah, okay.
The required public meeting notices is part of the Land Use Review Division's process. We have not submitted our application to Land Use Review Division yet, and it would be, I believe, near the beginning of that process, so we're hoping this fall. I have spoken to, I'm not sure who all the folks are here today, one of the concerns that, that I fielded was that, you know, some of our properties are 110, 120 years old, 70 years old, and so some of the concerns are, well-intentioned people have gone out and seen the properties and are concerned that that's what's going to be here. So the offer that I've made, that we've not completed yet, is to take a few of those folks and let's have a discussion around what affordable housing looked like 15 years ago and 80 years ago, and what new affordable housing looks like today.
Okay, that's reasonable. Don? Okay, and come on up, the other gentleman, please, state your name for the record.
My name is Clifford Johnson. I did a little research on this project, to, as of today, we are 2,000 units short of affordable senior housing in the Colorado Springs area. To not reserve some of this money, to just proceed, I don't see any reason behind it. It makes no sense. So I am in favor of reserving money, and then you can go forward on the rest of the project and see whether or not it warrants being approved or not, as being sent, as being sent up by the people who's building it, but to not reserve the money, I don't see any reason, why would we not do that, when we're 2,000 units short? I've lived in a senior housing facility before, 55 and over, and there was, it was a wonderful facility, and I don't see any reason why you should not proceed with this unit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else, anybody else want to speak about this? If not, I will bring it back up to the dais. Don, did you want to comment now?
Yes, thanks. First, if it is going to be a divener schnitzel, I'm going to have to recuse myself, because it's in competition with Don and Andy's hot dog series.
There you go.
The, for all the citizens, I share your concerns, and especially as you are, you know, this whole planning process is totally new to you. It's, it's not understandable. I recommend you do reach out to our Public Works Department, or, I mean, sorry, our City Planning Department, look at their website, look at how this goes. We do have a lady down there that does, that's part of her job is to help educate you on this. You should be receiving postcards sometime in the future, postcards are sent out to anybody that's within 1,000 feet of that area. The success rate of those postcards getting to somebody is less than laudable. We've had a lot of cases where people have come, said, I never got the postcard, but there will also be postings on the site. So as you drive by that daily, take a look at that site, if you see a poster up there, stop and read it, because it'll tell you when things are happening. But I would also register with the Planning Department that you are a concerned citizen. Typically on these things also, the developer will hold a public meeting to sit down and do that. I don't know if that's mandatory or not, but I hope in this case, since we know we have a lot of concerned citizens, that that does happen before it comes to the Planning Commission or before it comes to City Council.
Okay, and then David?
We, we, we on council received a, a brief summary from the Director of the Pikes Peak Area Council of Governments about six weeks ago, that shared the surveys in aging for El Paso County Assessment, which was a, a survey of our older community, and if you guys remember, the number one concern of older
Senior
is senior housing. I think it is, it is reflective of also the concern of our younger persons, which is to seek affordable housing. Obviously, situations have changed recently, how the city is going to address those things have changed differently. The state and the federal government are providing a means by which cities can begin to address this chronic shortage, this, this really large shortage that the gentleman spoke about, Mr. Johnson spoke about. And I think it's, it's also something that needs to be pointed out, that, that this engagement, the citizen engagement over this very, very serious issue that affects so many people, occurs on the same day that Greenway Flats opened to address a chronic issue with regard to homelessness in our community. Our, our city has changed, and I think it would be imprudent and inappropriate to not at least reserve the funding to allow the investigation of, if this is an appropriate way to address these issues going forward.
All right, I think we probably have talked about this enough. Again, thank you all for coming and waiting all day. I have a motion from Bill.
Motion for a motion requiring the City of Colorado Springs to issue its multifamily housing revenue bonds to finance the construction of senior affordable multifamily housing today. Now, this is a
And a second from Tom?
Yeah, President Skorman, before I second it, again, it sounds like the issues that I heard from you today, and thank you for being here for three or four hours, is parking, contact from the planning and community development folks, and that the lot's too small. And so we'll pay close attention to those issues going forward, but I think to move forward with this, you know, this is property I'm eligible for because of my age, if I could, maybe because of my salary from Colonel, or from City Council, I'd be eligible too, but I second this motion and hope that it's approved by this council.
Okay. Passes on an eight to zero vote.